Are you ready to start?
Counting down. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, and one.
Uh, city clerk, can you read the preamble, please?
This meeting is compliant with the Ralph M. Brown Act as amended by California Assembly Bill number three, six, one, effective September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, providing for a public health emergency exception to the standard teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. The purpose of this is to provide a safe environment for the public staff and council members while allowing for public participation. Accordingly, the public may observe city council meetings and are addressed to council using remote public comment options, or have the option to attend city council meetings in person. Please be advised that city council members may continue to participate in the meeting remotely. The council may take action on any item listed in the agenda. So dress the council in person. Location is fifty Park Place, Brisbane, Community Meeting Room. Masks are no longer required but are highly recommended in accordance with the California Department of Health Guidelines. To maintain public health and safety, please do not attend in person if you're experiencing symptoms associated with COVID nineteen or respiratory illness. So dress the city council on any item on or not on the posted agenda, fill out a request to speak form, located in the community meeting room lobby and submit it to the city clerk. Remote participation. Members of the public may observe participate in the city council meetings by logging into the Zoom webinar. City council meetings can also be viewed live and or on demand via the city's YouTube channel, youtube dot com forward slash Brisbane C A. Or on Comcast Channel twenty-seven. Archive videos can be replayed on the city's website. Brisbane C A dot org forward slash meetings. Please be advised that if there are technological difficulties, the meeting will nevertheless continue. Agenda materials may be viewed online at Brisbane C A dot org at least twenty-four hours prior to a special meeting, and at least seventy-two hours prior to a regular meeting. Remote public comments. Meeting participants are encouraged to submit public comments in writing in advance of the meeting. Aside from commenting while in the Zoom webinar, the following email and text line will also be monitored during the meeting and public comments received will be noted for the record during oral communications, one and two, or during an item. Email ipedia at Brisbane C A dot O R G, or text six, two, eight, two, one, nine, two, nine, two, two. Join the Zoom webinar, zoom dot U S with the I D, nine, nine, one, nine, three, six, two, eight, six, 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 and the caller number is one, six, six, nine, nine, zero, zero, nine, one, two, eight. If you need special assistance to participate in this meeting, please contact the city clerk at four, one, five, five, oh, eight, two, one, one, three. Notification in advance of the meeting will enable the city to make reasonable arrangements to ensure accessibility to this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be calling the meeting to order. The time is seven thirty-two. And if you could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Now we have roll call. Councilmember Cunningham.
Here.
Councilmember Lentz.
Here.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Now we'll move to the adoption of the agenda. I'd like to propose closing in memory of Roy Perez. Um, one of our livens at the, live boards at the Marina who passed away the other day. Um, does anyone else have any adjustments to the agenda they would like to propose?
I do not.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Second now.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Now I'll move to awards and presentations. And for this evening, we have Napollo from Hip Housing, um, who is a board member here to present us with their twenty twenty-three calendars.
You hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. It's an absolute pleasure to be here, honorable mayor, esteemed council members, as well as those remote. Familiar face. It's been a while here, and I'm representing Hip Housing today as a board member, uh, recently elected to the board, uh, to present the annual calendar. I'm a little late. January was a busy month. It was hard to get here. So here I am towards the end of February. I think everybody knows, uh, Hip Housing, uh, one of the large nonprofits here operating in county, promoting affordable housing, uh, roughly fifty years, uh, in the county, doing some great work. Do you know what HIP stands for? It's an acronym, H I P? Human Investment Project.
That's great.
So they have a lot of services beyond just affordable housing. And so I'm here not only to acknowledge the calendar, uh, which is a pretty cool piece of art. Uh, we have twelve young artists that, uh, did their art here and they put in, uh, what home means to them. So, pretty neat. Uh, we have them available for all city staff as well as community members. Uh, and there's also, you can pick up an additional one for five bucks. And I think that Ingrid has all the, all the extra in- inventory, right? Um, yeah, so I just wanna say, uh, it's wonderful to be here and we really appreciate the partnership with Brisbane and all the cities in the County of San Mateo that we work with and just absolutely appreciate the promotion and support of Hip Housing. Um, if anybody in the community has any, um, interest in hearing about more of our programs or anything, I'm happy to talk with folks. Easy to get ahold of. And again, we just deeply appreciate the support. And, uh, I think that's pretty much it. Any questions for me?
How should people contact you?
Uh, that is a great question. I don't know if I wanna give my phone number out.
Okay.
Uh, maybe I'll give, maybe I'll give that to Ingrid. Yeah, if folks have an interest in talking about the programs. We are supporting, uh, some families here in Brisbane. Uh, we have a lot of active, um, participants in the county. For greater than, um, twelve hundred, uh, people are being supported right now, uh, with affordable housing solutions. And we're looking to expand that footprint. Um, so really exciting work and we definitely need it, um, as you all know. And, um, just appreciate all the work you're doing to help in that regard.
Yeah, you know, thank you so much, Napollo, for wanting to be on the board for Hip Housing. I mean, they're a great organization. You know, I, I wish we had more people in town taking advantage of their program to, to share homes.
We've got opportunities.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Every city in San Mateo County has got, uh, opportunities. It's just kinda getting over that, you know, fear of, of, of sharing one's place and,
Yep.
Um, but I know that Hip Housing does a great job of, of vetting, you know, potential matches and, um, you know, and provides a great opportunity for, for someone who's living alone to have companionship. And then for that person who's looking for an affordable place to live, you know, for them to have a place. So, that, yeah, just thank you so much for wanting to do that. I didn't know and,
Yeah.
Um, I was al- already a big fan of yours, now even more so.
Uh, and I'll do one additional plug, cuz I think it'll be pretty cool to have some young artists, uh, kindergarten through fifth grade is eligibility. And we had, um, many, many hundreds, um, contributing to this. So I think it's a pretty good effort for the, the entire county, uh, to see that sort of representation. And, um, I enjoy the art in this. I think some of you do too. So, I think I'll leave it there and wish you all well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Napollo.
Yeah.
Now we will proceed to oral communications number one. And first speaker is Michael Barnes. Um, city clerk, if you could set the timer for two minutes.
My name is Michael Barnes. I'm a Brisbane resident. The results of the first survey about recreation on Sierra Point have not been released. This survey was completed in late twenty twenty-two. The city's consultant presented a bar chart of the results on the January thirty-first meeting, but we, the public, cannot see the raw data. It appears that the same number of respondents requested three different recreation items on Sierra Point. One, a park course or exercise stations. Two, a playground. And three, bicycle features. It is encouraging that the city has included yet another playground as an option for Sierra Point, even though Brisbane already has five public playgrounds for the toddler to seven-year-old age group. Likewise, it is good to see exercise stations for adults are an option for Sierra Point, even after they have also been approved as part of the Crocker Trail Master Plan. Adults also get a kayak ramp, volleyball courts, bocce ball courts on Sierra Point, which already have bocce ball courts. The city council direction that there will be no bicycle features included in the Sierra Point Master Plan i- illustrates another non-public policy decision and how arbitrary this is. Bicycle belongs everywhere, and particularly on Sierra Point with its history as home to cyclocross races, including night races. The Sierra Point Bay Trail that connects Brisbane to South San Francisco is heavily used by bicyclists of all age groups, but particularly is important to children. This is because the streets are not as safe as they sho- should be for bicyclists. Including a few bicycle features along the side of Sierra Point Bay Trail, similar to the new DG running paths, will motivate bicyclists in the eight to sixteen-year-old range to ride more, as we saw at the community festival in twenty twenty-one. While the city ca- continues to plan for the recreational needs of the very young and adults, it does not provide adequately for the recreational needs of older children and teens. Sierra Point is an entirely artificial landmass with a highly urbanized environment. While watching plants grow may be appealing to some, you should also provide recreation for all of our children, which means active recreation for those who have outgrown the play structures. Please direct the consultant to include bicycle features in at least one of the options for Sierra Point, and publicly release the results of the survey you asked the public to complete in late twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kim Phaline.
City council members, um, my name is Kim Phaline. I'm a Brisbane resident. And I'm here to ask you to reconsider the two-minute time limit on public testimony, and perhaps instead adjust it as needed based on number of speakers. The two limit, or two-minute time limit doesn't seem justified as you rare, oh, sorry. As you rarely have a lot of people attending your meetings, let alone planning to speak, unlike other larger cities like San Francisco. I've watched and attended many city council meetings. They don't think the public testimony has really contributed to extending your meetings by a significant amount. As someone who usually spends time writing what I plan to say and timing myself, two minutes is really hard. Three minutes is usually possible. I think a city council member pointed out when this came up in a past meeting that you can speak multiple times if you need to exceed two minutes. But a speaker, if they haven't written down their testimony, can easily lose their train of thought. And this two, two-minute time limit just, um, seems really like a negative message to the public. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We will move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve items A through E?
Some who?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye.
We'll now move on to the public hearing, item F. Um, F P, or S P dash C R O, Sierra Point Commercial District Zoning Text Amendment, twenty twenty-two dash R Z dash four zoning text amendment to Title seventeen, Chapter seventeen point one eight of the Brisbane Municipal Code, to update existing research and development use provisions and performance standards and finding that this project is exempt from environment review under sequel guidelines, section one, five, one, eight, three, A. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. This agenda item is to consider an update to the research and development use provisions contained in the Sierra Point Commercial District zoning regulations. By way of background, in two thousand eight, city council adopted zoning provision, provisions allowing for research and development or R and D uses in the district. With, with regards to animals, the ordinance provisions permitted by right are R and D using live insects, rodents, rabbits, fish, and amphibians. It prohibited the use of live dogs, cats, and primates. Use of other animals that were not named are subject to a conditional use permit. So essentially, currently, R and D use, using most animal species are subject to conditional use permits. Additionally, cit- city council is the approving authority instead of the Planning Commission for R and D use permits. The Planning Commission is the authority for all other use permits in Brisbane with applications only going to council on appeal. And there are no findings specific to R and D uses in the municipal code, but rather the standing, standard use permits findings apply. Last year, Bristol Myers Squibb applied for a use permit to conduct R and D using mini pigs at fourteen hundred Sierra Point Parkway. That has been the only R and D use permit application filed to date. That application was heard by city council, but ultimately it was withdrawn by the applicant before a decision was made. City council then directed staff to initiate, uh, zoning code amendment to consider updates to the live animals testing provisions. Also, an ad hoc council subcommittee met in the fall and suggested prohibiting the use of all animals, except those that are expressly permitted under the ordinance. That would eliminate the category of conditional use permits for animals. The subcommittee also suggested ru- removal of rabbits from the permitted list. The Planning Commission then held a public hearing last month to consider draft amendments and to provide a recommendation to council. Those are provided in the draft ordinance, which you have before you. In summary, the draft ordinance would do the following. First, it would eliminate the conditional use permit category of R and D using live animals. Thus, R and D using specifically named live animal groups would be permitted by right, and use of all other animals would be prohibited. Second, rabbits would be prohibited from R and D uses. Third, the permitted by right category would be expanded beyond insects to include the larger category of invertebrates. So not just insects. And invertebrates are, of course, those without a backbone, um, such as spiders, worms, and mollusks, others. Permitted uses would also be expanded from amphibians to also include reptiles. Those are the animal testing amendments that were proposed under the draft ordinance. And additionally, aside from the issue of permits for animal testing, use permits for R and D utilizing biological agents exceeding National Institute of Health risk group three would still be required. So that would be unchanged, except the approving authority would be the Planning Commission instead of city council. Council would still be the final authority if a planning commission decision was appealed, as is the process for all other types of use permits. And finally, an organizational cleanup of the performance standard provisions was included in the draft ordinance. As I mentioned last month, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and considered the draft ordinance. And following that hearing, they provided a recommendation to deny the proposed ordinance by a vote of three to one. Uh, summary of the Planning Commission's discussion was provided in the draft minutes, which was included in the council's report, so I, I won't go into that. But, uh, council has a few options with this application. Uh, council may vote to deny the zoning text amendment, thereby affirming the Planning Commission's recommendation. That would keep the existing R and D provisions for Sierra Point unchanged. Alternatively, council may reject the commission's recommendation and adopt the zoning text amendment as proposed. Or finally, council may adopt an amendment that is different from what's been provided. In this case, depending on council's directions, staff may need to bring a revised ordinance back to you for consideration. So in closing, staff waits direction from city council following tonight's public hearing. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to take them.
Councilmember Mackin, please go first.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Ken. I have a question. Uh, you had a couple different versions as attachments. Under attachment number two, the redlined version. I'm looking at what was, uh, written in the staff report as page forty-eight. There's a seventeen point one eight point oh, three, five, conditional uses, research and development. So everything under that particular section have been redlined out, but it does not necessarily just pertain to conditional uses. There are sections in here about risk analysis that I think would apply. So is there a reason why these were all stricken?
So the, the risk analysis would s- would still be required. And that would be essentially to, to look at whether the, the trigger for the risk group number three would be exceeded and, and, and trigger essentially um, a conditional use permit. So the conditional use permit would still apply to anything over a risk group three.
Is there a reason why we don't include a risk group four?
So, this is essentially a carryover from the original ordinance in two thousand eight. So it doesn't, it doesn't change the, the risk group. Um, essentially, risk group four is the point at which there is a, a community concern versus, uh, risk group three is a more of an individual risk to a person that's exposed and, and, um, and could be treated, whereas, so that threshold between three and four is the difference between a, a high community risk and not a high community risk. So essentially, that's a continuation of the ordinance. But a reorganization.
So we don't have risk group four simply because it wasn't contained on the prior iteration of this particular ordinance?
Or risk group four would be subject to a use permit, either under the current ordinance or any other provisions? So if such a use were to be proposed, it would require a use permit process.
Okay, so I, I'm still not clear. The items that are under seventeen point one eight point oh, three, five, are they contained somewhere else in this ordinance, even if they're not under conditional uses?
Yes. Yes, it's, it's been moved up into the conditional use category above it. So it's, it's been essentially grouped together with the other conditional uses.
So it would appear under seventeen point one eight point oh, three, oh?
That's correct, as F.
Okay.
The redline version.
Okay, so it, cuz it's not on the redline version. So whatever is stricken out really should appear under seventeen point one eight point oh, three, oh. Am I correct?
Um, yes, it shows up on my version. I'm not sure why it's, right, not on yours, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you done with your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember O'Connell, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Lentz.
Alright, thank you. Um, so, um, if we can go to page fifty-three, I think it is. Um, in regards to the planning commission's, uh, minutes. I know that you mentioned in the discussion that, uh, part of the reason why it was a three, one decision was because they felt that the scientific community was best, um, suited to, to provide, you know, particular, um, you know, guidelines to animal testing. But one of the other things that, that they, uh, have in here, and it says, um, it wa- it was expressed that prohibitions on animal testing would simply push R and D co- companies to other cities, while Brisbane residents would still benefit from such R and D testing. So w- was there any, um, feedback from the biotech, uh, industry in regards to, um, ha- having some discussion or having some influence on, on, uh, what we are proposing?
A couple of community members that, that are tied to biotechs spoke, but not anything formally from the biotech companies that are operating out there.
Okay, and, um, I mean, we have quite a few biotech companies out at Sierra Point. Um, was there any outreach to them? You know, like we have, uh, you know, when there is a project, you know, in the neighborhood, you know, people around the neighborhood get a notice. So did we, uh, notify the companies, um,
We, we did. We did both, uh, uh, earlier outreach, just to give them a heads up in, in the form of a letter as well as the usual, um, notice of public hearing.
Okay. Um, let's see. So, you know, our city's not the only city that allows biotech. Um, you know, we have our neighbor to the south and of course, north in San Francisco. So, uh, I'm, I'm curious, what are the guidelines that these other cities have in regards to animal testing?
So I, I looked specifically at South San Francisco being very close and, and being essentially a biotech hub. And, and I did, I did not find any, um, exclusions on animal testing. It was their, their, um, uses were either permitted or not permitted. So there was not that nuance of conditional use permit.
Okay. And, and then, um, Clay, I, I'm gonna have you put on your, your, uh, memory cap here, you know, go back to two thousand eight. If possible. I know, John, were you on? Yeah, okay, so, uh.
The, the memory cap doesn't work so well these days. I'll give it a shot.
So, you know, at the time, I was on the planning commission, but this, you know, particular, you know, uh, situation, you know, with animal testing, that, that really wasn't discussed by, uh, since I don't remember. So my memory cap maybe is not so good. But I know that the, the council at the time, you know, was, was wrestling with this and trying to find a, a, a balance and, 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 um, if you can just kinda give some, some, something that you remember, like, you know, how they were working with the community to find kind of this, th- this approach of, of some animals being prohibited, some being allowed, and then why other animals not on the list, you know, to have some kind of conditional, uh, use.
Well, we're, we're fortunate, cuz we have a member of the audience who was on the city council at the time. So I'm, I, I, I will, uh, he, 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 he can check my memory, um, uh, cuz I, I do recall Councilmember Barnes being very involved in this issue at that time. Um, so we, at that time, we did not allow for any animal testing, as I recall. And, uh, what we were putting together was a, uh, an ordinance that would, would, would provide some, uh, the, some, um, ability to do that and also, um, some, uh, exception in terms of how people could apply for, um, the larger animals. Um, and, um, uh, that was basically the, the, the compromise that was brought forward. And it was decided by the council at that time that it would be best decided at the council level as opposed to having a, uh, process through the planning commission. So as I recall, that was the, uh, uh, the reason, um, for that. Um, we did have, um, at that time, um, I believe it was, um, was it Healthcare Partners? The, the predecessor to Health Peak, um, was, uh, was the company that was looking at the, uh, uh, what is now called the Shore. Um, and they were, um, working with the city on a development agreement. And they wanted to, uh, um, you know, be able to, um, market their product or pro- project as a, as a life science project. So that was part of the impetus to, um, to look at doing that.
Okay, so, maybe we didn't receive any feedback from the biotech community now, but we did receive it back in two thousand and eight. And they helped, uh, provide some guidance of what they felt that they could, hmm, you know, that they felt that was appropriate in order to bring biotech companies to Sierra Point.
Yeah, I mean, they, they,
Developer, right?
They, they were definitely involved. Um, and, um, as I recall, there was a fairly robust community group. Uh, people who lived in Brisbane and worked in, um, various, uh, fields and medicine and life science and stuff that were also very involved. So there was, there was a lot of community discussion at that time about, about the ordinance that was put together.
Okay, great. Now, thank you for providing some historical perspective.
Um, I think I got that right.
Okay. And, and, and so, you know, in this staff report, you know, it talks about this, the, the FDA Modernization Act two point oh. And, and that was just passed by Congress just a couple of months ago. So it's a brand new thing. Um, you know, and it says that i- it, it removes the requirement to use animal testing in drug development, allows drug com- allows drug companies the option of using non-clinical tests instead of tests on animals when making new drug submissions to the uh US Food and Drug Administration, the FDA. So basically, this is saying that, okay, in, I guess in some situations, probably not all, that you, you know, the companies can go one route for the testing in order to submit it to the FDA, or they can use, say, traditional animal testing that they've done in, in the past. Is, is that?
That's, that's my understanding of it, yes.
Okay. And, and, and you, you, you say here that the FDA uh doesn't say that, that you can't test on animals, it's.
Correct.
Okay. All right, tho- those are the only questions I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham? Any questions?
I have one question. Did we receive any negative feedback from all of our biotech companies relative to the city council wanting to move ahead with this?
We have not received uh correspondence from biotech companies on this.
Okay, so did you just sent a letter through the mail? Did you guys send emails or make phone calls or anything?
Just through the mail.
What about at the subcommittee level was like Bristol Myers Squibb invited to attend any subcommittee meetings to give input since, you know, they were somebody who experienced this ordinance already?
No.
So no, no biotech companies gave input at the subcommittee level when the suggestions were being crafted? Is my understanding from what you're saying? And then what about, what about um companies that have leased out at um Genesis and at Health Peak, but maybe haven't moved in? Were those companies contacted to let them know that this was up for discussion?
Uh, no, this, the correspondence would have gone to the ownership of, of those properties.
Okay, so did you guys reach out to then the developers Genesis and Health Peak? And then they would have disseminated that information?
Correct.
Did they respond to any contact from you?
I did have a conversation with Health Peak representative.
Scott?
Yeah, it wasn't Scott, it was um.
Natalia?
No, it was another gentleman um who works in the development side. When he got the letter that Ken referenced, just wondering what the, what the kind of parameters were and what the history was. So I gave a little breadth background on it uh at that point.
Okay. Do we know of anyone in Brisbane who's doing any by right according to what's on the books right now with animal testing?
I'm un, I'm unsure on the answer to that. My recollection is there may be somebody um, rodent testing, but I'd have to double check that. I, I'm not a hundred percent.
Cause I think it would be important to know if we were going to, let's say prohibit testing on rabbits. If there was somebody who was already testing on rabbits, maybe they missed that piece of mail, but that could really impact their whole business operation in Brisbane. If suddenly they can no longer conduct their business. So I think getting an answer to that is really important.
Well, there would be some issues with non-conforming rights. If somebody establishes the use under permitted ordinance, the ordinance changes again. The, the, the ability to continue a use um does remain through non-conforming rights. Sure, uh, Michael could weigh in on that if he wishes, but so that would be cover somebody who's operating under the current ordinance who, whose use would no longer be allowed.
So they would essentially be grandfathered in?
Correct.
Okay. And um, I know that there is something in here that adjusts cannabis research and development. Can you just give more information about that?
Yes, so cannabis research and development is part of the definitions section in the municipal code. And by, and then it's acknowledged actually within this zoning district as, as allowed as well. So the portion that addresses cannabis really gets to um performance standards referencing a, a whole nother chapter of the code. So we simply moved that section down to the performance standard section as a, a cleanup item, but it wouldn't alter the, what's allowed out there.
That's what I thought, I just want to confirm that that was more of like a cleanup situation. Okay, that's the end of my questions. Does anyone else have any other questions before we open up the public hearing? No, okay, so I will open the public hearing at this time. And I will set the speaker time for this item to three minutes. Do we have, I see a slip here. Okay, our first speaker is Michael Barnes.
Good evening again, my name is Michael Barnes, I'm a Brisbane resident. For some historical perspective, um HCP at the time in two thousand eight, I think, came to us and said that if animal testing was not allowed by right, then we probably would not get any biotech companies out there because no company wants to come before any body of the city and speak in favor of animal testing because it makes them a target for animal rights activists. And it is, and they'll be rejected, they'll, they won't get their, their use permit approved, which is exactly what happened here in Brisbane when they did come asking for a cond- conditional use. The city council tried to find a way to deny it and then they got the message and they, they pulled their application. So their, their vision back in two thousand eight was correct here in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So I don't think that much has changed. I want to talk briefly about um in vitro and in silico testing. I myself have developed several uh biochemical and cell-based assays. That is a routine part of all chemical screen, screening, all drug development always has in vitro. And now in silico modeling as well, the in silico modeling is based on animal and human results. So when you're dealing with a novel drug, a brand new molecule that's never been investigated before, you're testing it in a computer model that has been generated based on different molecules. And the question is, do those previous molecules resemble the new molecule enough to predict the new molecule's behavior and reaction in an animal? And we don't know that, so I'm just saying, I've used a lot of in silico programs. They help, but they are not perfect. It's, it's kind of a problem, maybe, you know, I heard you say Cliff that there are two different routes. You can go with this in silico te- modeling and in vitro testing. That's all done for all molecules now anyway. There is no other route, everybody does that. The question is, what happens when you put it in an animal? And, you know, do we want to jump straight from modeling into human testing? And if that's the case, the people in phase one clinical trials are going to be at, at risk at this point. I just, it, that's a kind of a leap of faith, unless the molecules you're testing have already been through human testing and you know they're going to be safe. Uh rabbits have also, I know that they're used in cardiovascular modeling, but they also have other uses. We were using them at a company I worked at several years ago in wound healing. Yeah, everybody's using this. And I think that the reason why uh South San Francisco probably does not have any restrictions on animal testing or any prohibitions is because they know that if a company comes to the city council, the planning commission, they're going to run into exactly what um, who was it that came here?
Bristol Myers.
Bristol Myers, we've ran into here. They're going to ask and then it's going to get more restrictive. So this is just, this is just the truth, this is just what happens.
Thank you, Michael. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? I see no other hands raised, Madam Mayor. Okay. Do I have a first and second to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, we'll call vote please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye.
We'll now move on to council discussion. Is there anyone who would like to start?
I will.
Okay, councilmember Cunningham?
I've made my notes in list format to keep myself on um track here. So we've only had one application for testing on mini pigs, which was withdrawn by the applicant in, on August twenty-sixth. That was just before October when the House easily passed the bill for the um animal chat testing two point oh change. Um, I don't know whether that was coincidence or what, but there you have it. And then on December, uh, actually, when the House passed this bill, it was three quarters yes, a quarter no, which was pretty interesting. But what, then when it went to the Senate, the bill passed unanimously. Have we ever seen this sort of cooperation from the Democrats and the Republicans in the last fifty years in this country? I don't think so. So that brings a point. If, and I really mean if, the drug companies and the biotech did not want this bill and did not want this change, do you not think they would have lobbied like old get out to stop it getting passed? You know that answer is yes, so why didn't they? They have been working on these changes, the first changes in seventy years in this area. They have been working on it for so long, they all came to an agreement. We did not hear any kind of lobbying from the largest biotech and the largest pharmaceutical companies in the world. None, not one. It went through, it sailed through unanimously. So we have over eight hundred thousand sentient animals used in animal testing outside of the rodents and whatever. I'm talking dogs, cats, pigs, chimpanzees in this country each year. About eighty thousand of them are in California. So even by reducing the use of some animals because of this modernization act, we're helping a lot of different things. We've got environmental issues using animals in testing. We have a lot of money being made by people raising animals for animal testing and making huge profits doing that. And um I can uh make available to the city, the US Department of Agriculture report on this from two thousand and nineteen. The requirement for animal testing other than rodents is now firmly in the hands of the biotech and pharmaceutical companies. Now, for any of you who know MDPHDs who work in biotech and the medical fields, they don't want to test on animals, they've been working for years trying to get away from it. So they have come to the firm conclusion that the accuracy of the science they're putting forward is much more beneficial to the human beings for whom these drugs are being made. The efficacy of testing on human biology has proven to be far more efficacious than much of the animal testing. Pigs, for example, respond very differently to any kind of sedation. Anybody who knows veterinary science, um, or any veterinarians will tell you, pigs do not respond like animal, like humans if you give them an anesthetic. It can be a very dangerous and unpredictable thing. So you know, our biologies are just that much different. And the percentage of efficacy on heart medications has proven to be far more accurate using human tissue assays, organ on a chip and other technologies than animal testing. A lot of different studies came out of the top universities around the world that prove that. Less environmental damage, lower cost for drugs to market was another big reason that they wanted to go forward with this. They're not doing the animal testing, which is a laborious, long, long process. So it's going to, from a financial perspective, save billions of dollars to these companies. That's why they didn't complain, that's why this bill went through. Yes, we have all been grateful recipient of life-saving drugs. I am one of those people that in the past were required to be tested on animals prior to being allowed to be tested on humans and then to market. It is not going to end animal testing, it is going to reduce it. Over two hundred biotech and pharmaceutical companies endorsed the bill and none of Big Pharma opposed it. I will provide those links as well. This is not about whether you like animal testing or not, this goes much, much deeper than that. It would be arrogant of us to ignore the factors and to take a step backwards in time by allowing mini pig testing in Brisbane. These animals are up to three hundred pounds each. For those of us who studied the sciences and came out with science degrees twenty, thirty and forty years ago, we had no other options, we had to test on animals. I can't tell you how many animals I tested on, how many animals I had to cut up to get my degree. Finally, we've only had this one application and to add mini pigs for testing in Brisbane, that application was withdrawn. So this is a step forward and not a step backward, that's my feeling on this topic.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to go next? Councilmember Lentz?
All right. I, I, I first have a question for staff. So I, I just want to be clear on the um, on the modernization act two point oh. So that is, that act is allowing the pharmaceutical community, biotech community, an option of using one way of, of testing while also providing uh the ability to test with animals as well. So it's, it's not like we're going to eliminate one, we're going to, you're just going to do this. It's like, oh, here's another option for you. And as um Michael Barnes said, you know, many times, it's, it's using both at the same time to achieve what your outcome is, is, do I got that right?
That's, that's correct, it gives the option, yeah.
Okay.
So just allowing more discretion, right? It's just giving those biotech companies more freedom in how they.
Madam Mayor, may I add one more thing to this?
Well, let's, let, let's.
I, I, because it sort of helps answer that question.
Okay.
So the FDA required all drug companies to test on animals required before bringing a drug to human testing and then to market. That requirement has been removed.
Okay.
Great.
You know, testing on animals is, can be an emotional, you know, uh, kind of an emotional dilemma, right? I mean, of course, when we, when we eat animals, for some folks, that's also an emotional dilemma. For many, though, it's, it's not. When we take a drug that was tested, the, you know, that had animal testing to, to get it to market, we don't really think about it. But when we're here making a decision, then we do, right? I mean, sometimes it's just, you know, being in this position that, that you know, where you have to make a decision. And, you know, you look at uh, you know, the science that's been provided. You, you take the feedback from uh the planning commission. You take feedback from previous councils when they were making decisions. And, and, and you, you try and come up with something that you think is right. And um. you know, for me, it kind of gets down to that, that one kind of like personal decision, you know, would, would I feel comfortable saying, no, you can't test on animals? And then, you know, you know, then also perhaps denying someone the ability to use a drug to keep them from suffering or to save their life, right? And I, I, I would, I wouldn't pass that on to my own family, I wouldn't pass that on to anybody in the community and, 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 and no one in the world, right? I mean, that, that's where I, I, I come from in, in regards to this. When I look at the history over the last, I guess, you know, twelve, fourteen years, um, we've only had the one. And, um, you know, I, I think that the previous council back in oh-eight, they worked really well with the community, and they crafted language that seemed to find a balance. And it's worked well, um, since then. Yes, we had a, an applicant come before us. And in the end, they, they pulled their application. You know, and in the end, I, I wish they wouldn't have. You know, I, to me, the discussion wasn't whether or not to allow it, but, you know, how, how we treat the animals, right? To me, if, if, it, it's about doing the humane way. But to take away that ability to perhaps save someone's life, um, I, I, you know, in good conscience, I could not do that. Um, you know, there was the other reference from the Planning Commission in regards to, um, the, if, if you take away the, you know, this right, then you, or a conditional right, um, then you, you potentially risk, um, losing businesses in the biotech community coming to Brisbane. And, um, in, really, in the end, i- i- it should be the scientific community that, that works with, um, government to come up with the right guidelines. And so, um, I feel that what we have in place is good. I do like, uh, the addition of some of the non-verbary, um, options as well as reptiles. So I would actually kind of, I'd keep what we have in place and then just add some of those by rights, um, uh, animal groups, uh, to the list. So that's where I stand.
Okay, Councilmember O'Connell?
Hi, um. So I, I wanna thank, um, the Subcommittee and staff for the work that they did on this. And I know it's not easy, and I know that it's, you know, got difficulties when you try to apply rules and draft them to protect everyone as best you can. Um, back in the day when this original ordinance was, the rules were put in place, I understand that the developer, and this was before they even had broken ground, um, was worried that they wouldn't be able to lease the property if they didn't have animal testing available. And even as a conditional use, it doesn't seem that they've had those issues. And if it means that certain businesses do not come to Brisbane, so be it. Maybe those businesses can be somewhere else. We don't need to be the end-all and be-all for every business. So, um, I'm happy with the, the language that's been written. And I would like to, for the issue of biological agents over, over level three, I would prefer to see, um, that, um, decision be left with the city council. I would prefer it to not be the Planning Commission, but I would not wanna hold up this change to our, um, the proposed change to our regulations um, with that, if that would be a stumbling block.
Thank you. Councilmember Mackin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think as a starting point, I would just underscore that I, I believe Brisbane is a progressive community and perceives itself that way. The obvious evidence of that is that this original ordinance was over ten years ago, and probably a lot of other communities didn't draft these type of ordinances. So I think that shows a community intent. Whether at the time the existing ordinance was crafted, anyone even thought of mini pigs? I don't even think most people knew what mini pigs were. So I'm not surprised it was not included in that original draft. With regard to the federal legislation that was recently passed, I read a lot about that. I read about the event leading up to it. It was bipartisan legislation. It was led by Rand Paul, who is not known to be a progressive. I think that that told me something, which is that it's the direction the world is going in. I did some further research about what the trends are worldwide. Um, Councilmember Cunningham mentioned efficacy of testing. We can debate that all night. But I did also read that so many animal studies now have shown that they're not conclusive, that a lot of times it ends up in human studies anyway. And that was part of the reason that this FDA changing legislation was passed. As far as the emotionalism in this, I'm not gonna make a decision on emotion. I'm gonna make a decision based on facts that I've read, what I think community intent is. A lot of things have been brought up. Um, again, Councilmember O'Connell, you mentioned whether or not this is a deterrent to any potential lessies in our biotech community. And the conversations that I had last year, particularly with leasing agents at Sierra Point, we are absolutely the hottest leasing commodity right now. I do not see this ordinance impairing anything. Brisbane is really in demand. I even, I went through a bunch of online biotech newsletters, and they're not talking about South San Francisco. They've all said Brisbane has now eclipsed South San Francisco. I would also just mention that if we compare to South San Francisco, for instance, in their ordinance, we are not South San Francisco. We could go around the Bay Area and maybe find all different kinds of things. What we're dealing with is what we want to do. We are not other communities. Personally, I believe that the change in this ordinance, and also dovetailing off of the, the FDA and the direction that the country is going in, that the world is going in, I think it's time to go the way everyone else is gonna head. And I think a change in this ordinance would reflect that. I would also concur with Councilmember O'Connell that, um, bioagents over level four need to be addressed, not just assumed. I think it actually needs to be stated in our ordinance. So I would, I would make a motion to approve this ordinance.
Thank you. Um, this is a really challenging topic to deliberate, I think, because nobody wants to co-sign the mistreatment of animals, so to speak. But I do feel that, um, Brisbane is wanting to be a biotech hotspot. And when you want to attract that kind of business, then you also have to understand what comes along with that. And animal testing is a part of that. Um, I did have a discussion with Bristol Myers Squibb back when they applied, um, just because it's such a complicated issue. And so I had so many questions for them, and they really walked me through exactly how they would have conducted their study. Um, they're not going to conduct that in Brisbane, obviously, now, but they will still likely do that just in another facility, in another state. Um, and what they told me about how the pigs would be treated made me more comfortable and more understanding with how this process works. They told me that, um, with animal testing, it's rated with three different levels of pain for the animal. So level one is basically no pain at all, maybe just like an injection or just like drawing blood here or there. It's mostly observation. That's like a level-one type, um, study. And level two is where the animal experiences some moderate pain, but pain medicine is administered. And then a lot, that would be the study that they would conduct. And then a level three is where you intentionally invoke pain on the animal and no, um, remedy is provided. So I think what I would do is look at our animal testing and maybe put more, um, put more controls around, let's say outlaw a level-three-type, um, test. And then I also, um, I'm in favor of removing rabbits as a by-right animal. I do think that they are companion animals, um, which was the intent behind not having cats and dogs. But I think ultimately, we're likely too far apart anyway for these suggestions to make us all happy. Um, I appreciate where our country is going, and I hope that, you know, companies like Bristol Myers Squibb would decide not to do animal testing because now they aren't required to. But I believe in giving businesses discretion, which is what our country is saying, what's what our country is offering. They're giving that discretion for these biotech companies to determine whether they feel animal testing is needed. Right now, our ordinance essentially gives some discretion to businesses. I recognize that the outreach that was done is in line with probably the steps that we always take. But I, I really think that because we are trying to attract all of these businesses to Brisbane, and because there are so many, um, spaces that have been leased, but people haven't fully moved in, I think that we really should have been more hands-on with communicating with them what we, what we're proposing here, and should have really sought feedback from the businesses that were impacting. I, I wouldn't feel comfortable moving forward with this change unless more of those companies, like, no one came to the table at all. At least I would like to hear them say, I would think Bristol Myers would say something, right? I would at least want to hear from the businesses that we have in Brisbane and have them say, hey, you know, now that this is passed, we, we're, this, this doesn't affect us because we're no longer intending on doing animal testing. So if you guys wanna make this change, that's totally fine for us. But we're just missing a key component of feedback from the stakeholders that this impacts. And I'd love to, I'd love to say, no, we don't need animal testing, and let's just get rid of it. But we're impacting a whole collection of businesses, and I haven't heard from a single one of them. So I couldn't move forward with this as written, what's suggested.
So are, are you trying to make a suggestion then, Madison, that perhaps, um, we're making a decision without receiving the full breadth of, of information to, you know, to move this forward, and that perhaps, you know, doing additional outreach in, in more than just sending a letter in the mail?
Totally.
Um, so that we can get that feedback, so that then we, as a council, can provide a, a, a more in-depth and, I, I think, in, in, you know, intelligent, you know, uh, decision?
Absolutely. I mean, I, I would hope that, like Mitch Bull, for example, would maybe go personally to businesses or reach out to them with a personal email or phone call. I hope that would have happened at the Subcommittee level to drive the recommendations here to make sure that we're weighing all sides of an issue. Um, but I, I wanna hear from, I wanna hear from our businesses. And I did take the time to meet with Bristol Myers Squibb, and what they told me, it didn't make me ecstatic about mini pig testing, but I understood it to the point that I was okay with moving forward with their application. And we, that never occurred at the council level, but I think that we're missing critical information here from, from our businesses directly.
You know, also, um, I mean, there isn't anyone, there isn't any company before us who is seeking a conditional approval for animal testing. So it, it, I think it behooves us, for us as a, as a, you know, as the, as the main decision-making body of our city to get that information. And then if, if the, if representatives from, uh, our business community out at Sierra Point say, you know, we don't have any issues with this, then, okay. You know, but if they do, then I think we really need to evaluate that. And we're, and we're not getting that bit of information, which makes it, I think, um, it makes it difficult, right, to, to, to put forth a sound decision? Yes, you know, Congress did pass that act, but that's just to give these, these companies just another option for testing. It doesn't mean, oh, that this is the way to go and, and, and now you don't need to animal test anymore. It's just provides another option, another layer of testing that, you know, ultimately is, is about providing safe drugs to the marketplace. So.
Okay, I'll, I'll add to that.
Wait, 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 hold on. We have a, we have a hand raised from, um, Councilmember O'Connell. Been raised for a couple of minutes, and then I'll take you next.
Thank you. Um, so this question's really for staff. If we pass these changes tonight, is there a waiting period or a comment period or a second reading? Or would they go into effect immediately?
Um, my video is not working at the moment, but the answer is there would be a second reading on this, and it would go into effect thirty days thereafter.
Thank you. Um, with that, I would wanna make a motion to reject-
Karen wants to say something. Karen, just, hold on. Then I'll take your motion.
I just wanna bring back to your attention, take all the emotion out of it, forget what's going on here. If the pharmaceutical companies and the biotech companies hated this, they would have lobbied the Congress and the Senate, and they did not.
Well, why would you lobby against having more freedom? Like, why would you get a lobby against having discretion? I don't think you would.
They would have stopped this going through, is what I'm saying. They, if they, if they really didn't want this change, they would have stopped it.
But, okay. All right, Terry, are you gonna make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to reject the Planning Commission, uh, recommendation and adopt as proposed.
I'll second that.
City Clerk, we'll call vote please.
Through the, through the mayor, I just have one clarification. I believe, uh, Councilmember O'Connell had mentioned moving risk-three use permits back to city council review and approval. Is that part of your motion?
I would like to do that, but if this is going to prolong this discussion-
You can make that change this evening.
Okay. Um, I would like to, I, I'll amend my motion to reject the Planning Commission decision To reject the planning commission decision and adopt the ordinance as proposed. Moving the decision-making for biological agents level three and above. To the city council level.
I'll still second that.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lent. Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
No. We'll now move on to.
You know, if we, just, just a second. So I, you know, you, you brought up a good point and I just want to make sure that that. Is addressed by staff so that we will have our economic director, Mitch Bull, reach out to. The, the biotech companies at Sierra Point to solicit their feedback. And, and provide a little bit more robust outreach to them so that. We can get their comments for the second reading when it comes back before the council.
If that's the. Correction from the council, yes.
Okay, well, it seemed like that, that was. Okay to do that. Not, I think, Terry, that's why you then moved forward with the motion.
There, well, because there is the second reading and there will be a thirty day. Enactment period. I do think that that gives staff time to go ahead and make sure there is no. Underlying issues that are currently on the table and moving forward, you know, at, at that point. When we go to the second reading, we can certainly, if there is things to discuss, we certainly can.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not hearing anybody say no, so we will have that outreach.
Thanks.
Okay, new business item G, consider approval of First Amendment to lease, lease for property at twenty-five Park Place. Brisbane, California. Approval of the First Amendment is exempt from further review under the California Environmental Quality Act. Because it's not a project, section fifteen, three, seven, eight B, sequel guidelines, staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. Tonight, we have an extension of the lease at twenty-five Park Place that would go through December thirty-first. Of twenty forty-six. The purpose of this is to facilitate the. Funding for a. Approximately four and a half to five million dollar tenant improvement that we would be doing. We need to have the extension of the lease to be able to borrow the money in, over. Period of time that we have the lease. The lease itself would be at a three percent annual increase. With a potential reset in twenty thirty-four. Depending on market conditions. We've outlined those conditions in the, the staff report. While history would suggest that that reset would not be put in play. It's a possibility and that, and it's a protection that the, the property owner wanted to, to have. Not in the staff report, but just in terms of next steps, assuming you approve this tonight, we will move forward. With bringing to the infrastructure subcommittee the. Plans for the remodel and then from there we'll have a notice of bid. That would come to the city council to start the process for a construction contract. We'll also be working with our financial advisor on the financing for the. For the improvements and we'll bring that to your administrative services subcommittee and then the recommendation to the, to the full city council. So those are the next two steps. If all goes well, we hope to be under construction sometime this summer. And I like to joke with staff that. My goal is to move in on Monday and move out on Friday. So we're, we're gonna try to do this as fast as we can and get that, get this in place.
Okay, do we have council questions?
I have none.
Oh, I'm seeing a hand from Councilmember O'Connell.
Oh, good. You saw me waving in the distance. So when we first leased this property. Did we have an idea of what kind of budget for renovation that would be?
We had some ideas. We knew there was going to be extensive. The building was needing a lot of upgrades. You know, electrical, HVAC, everything and, and as well as just the. Getting it ready for the office operation that we were gonna have. There was quite different use in there. I don't know that we had any specific budget because we just didn't have enough information to put that together at that time.
Okay, that's my only question right at the moment. Thank you.
Councilmember Lent.
I don't have any at this time.
Councilmember Mackin.
Questions, thank you.
Did I call on you already, Councilmember Cunningham?
Yeah, no, I have no questions, thanks.
I don't have any questions either. So we will move to public comments.
You want to take a motion?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There are no public comments at this time, Madam Mayor.
Oh, okay. Now we'll move to council discussion. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion that we. Consider approval of the First Amendment to lease for property at twenty-five Park Place, Brisbane, California.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lent.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye. Okay, we'll now move to staff reports. City managers report on upcoming activities.
I have no report tonight.
Fantastic. Mayor Council Matters. Countywide assignment, assignments and subcommittee reports.
Can I do economic development?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
What a fabulous meeting that was. I, I actually asked for Mitch's notes to be printed out because he had good news after good news after good news. And then did we need some good news, right? So. The, the Genesis Marina Building, which won't even be completed till September, has just won. Project is being lead gold standard and has been pre-certified as the world's first true. Construction site. And it's T R U E, if you want to look it up. The certification by the Green Business Certification. Certifies that over ninety percent of construction waste at this site from the construction of this building. And site is used for other uses and not diverted to landfills and incineration. That was truly amazing to me and a piece of information certainly worth sharing. We also have two of the three buildings completely pre-leased already. And then there was just more great news after great news about. Our EV battery company doing great job here. Yeah, it was, it was a really wonderful meeting and we discussed some other issues moving forward about. Potential rezoning and things like that. So that was very exciting.
Yeah, no, I think you captured it all.
Great.
I think that was the only thing for city subcommittees. Did anyone have any county? Meetings they'd like to report out on?
You know, I had a community.org meeting this morning and. They, they did a. They did a presentation, well, the Express Lane folks did a presentation. On how the Express Lane operation is, is providing community benefits for folks. Who are in underserved areas. So you would think, okay, wait a minute, how, how does that serve? Underserved folks, but you know. It's a money revenue. Operation. And so a lot of that money or some of that money is going towards providing. You know, clip of cards for folks in underserved areas. Creating a better local transit for some folks in their areas. And so. You know, they, they didn't say when the, the Express Lane will be in, in operation. I mean, granted, we can drive on it, but it's not in service where you would. You know, you, you, you have to pay if you were a single occupant driver. But Karen, maybe you have some info on that since you're on CCAG, when, when that's gonna be fully operational.
It says tolling starts soon. That just showed up.
It did, yeah, I saw.
I, I, I think there's a lot, especially after the storms. There was some underlying issues on all of the freeway and as we well know, potholes all over the place, so. I think every single thing that we had planned in our city and everywhere else is. Kind of a little behind schedule as a result of storm damage, so. Hmm, is my answer.
Okay, all right. All right, that's it.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, I have a report.
Okay.
As you know, I'm the. Board representative on Peninsula Clean Energy and additionally now I'm working with the Citizens Advisory Committee. Of Peninsula Clean Energy and. The Citizens Advisory Committee, they provide suggestions to the board. They work and help further the mission of. Peninsula Clean Energy and there's going to be a lot more community outreach because. As you probably all know, there's a, a big push for electrification. It's caused a lot of confusion on the part of. Many Peninsula Clean Energy customers not knowing what they can feasibly afford, how to go about doing it. And so that's kind of a, a new direction, which is. There'll be more outreach in, in. Giving people the nuts and bolts and, and probably I would characterize it as a lot more handholding to make this a little bit easier. And there's additionally, there's two openings right now on the Citizens Advisory Committee. So I would just suggest if there's anyone in Brisbane who has an interest in this. And climate change, decarbonization. Go to the Peninsula Clean Energy website. I think it might be posted now, the application, if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to written communications. Madam Mayor, we received written correspondence from Jeffrey Tong on the sixteenth. Why we need a dedicated one oh one, three eighty bike and pet overpass, Dana Dilworth, two fifteen. Animal testing on. City council meeting on February sixteenth. Brenda Moreno received on this February seventh gun safety, safe storage ordinance in Brisbane. Thank you. We'll now move on to oral communications. Number two, I have two slips at this time. Kim Folien is first. We will do two minutes.
Good evening again, City Council, Kim Folien, Brisbane resident. I just wanted to follow up on your discussion on the animal testing. It's a total political win for any, anybody.
Wait, what? Pause.
What? Someone was saying something? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, this is, this is for items that are not on the agenda.
Okay, so I can't talk, so.
Wait, wait, let's, attorney, can you, city attorney, can you weigh in? Hold on, we'll start your timer.
Sure. Video is still not working. The. The, the question here is whether or not. Seems like this is an item that could be addressed here under oral communication. The, the agenda has been, or the agenda item has been heard. I think giving this speaker two minutes to talk about something that comes out of it, I think is, is in order.
Okay, so city clerk, will you restart the time, please? Hold on, just wait until your.
Let me know.
Okay, you can start.
So I just wanted to follow up on the fact that one council member made the point, this is bipartisan. It's a total political win. It's an easy, easy win for any congressman in the senate to, to advocate for that. I support that act as well. All of biotech supports it because it's a huge economic benefit to the pharmaceutical industry. If they can not do animal testing, but the fact is, and is that it's still required that these. These synthetic models, computer modeling, doesn't give you all the data you need to ensure a safe human drug. And I would just encourage you in your comment period, if you're gonna reach out. To the businesses, to please reach out to actual scientists. You have one on your planning commission that is a drug development scientist. And he has a lot of great information. You might take the time to listen to that meeting if you didn't. And listen to what he has to say about the act and the reality of implementing that act. Yes, the country is going in the direction of no animal testing. I think, I don't think there's anyone on the planet that doesn't support that. But we're not there yet. And unfortunately, even to get there is still gonna require more animal testing to make those models more accurate. So, and just one last thing, pigs are an accurate human or an accurate model for the human heart. Go ask any scientist, so that, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. And. Our next speaker is Michael Barnes. We'll restart the timer at two minutes.
Michael Barnes, Brisbane resident. The changes to the Sierra Point animal testing ordinance did not come from the community. These changes are being imposed on the community and the local industry by the council. You originated this ban on animal testing. You have, in fact, ignored the community. I have over forty years of experience in the biotech and pharmaceutical industry. And the last twenty-five years I spent in research. Your planning commission has a clinician and a medical doctor, and you rejected their informed advice. This town is full of professionals in the biotech and pharmaceutical industry. Everyone in the drug industry looks forward to replacing animals with computer modeling and in vitro testing. As I stated earlier, I have developed both biochemical and cell-based assays. Your decision was not based on science. It was based on a wish to be politically correct. The federal legislation does not ban animal testing, but what you did tonight is a ban on animal testing. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time, city clerk? I see no raised hands, Madam Mayor. Okay, so we will now adjourn the meeting at eight fifty-six.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.